Good morning. If everyone could take their seats. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, February 6, 2024. Board meeting. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Leonard Hines. And then he will also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Father, we come to thee on this day. And Lord, as you've made the sun to shine outside, may the sun of God shine in this place. Lord, there are so many things today, and we're grateful for the 50th anniversary of our fire and rescue. We pray your blessing upon them. And Lord, the officers that are serving in the field, the EMA and Lord Communications, everything involved in the safety of the public, we pray you'd bless them. But yet, Lord, here there's business to conduct, plans to make, things to work through, so I pray your blessing in this meeting. Lead our administration. Lead all of, Lord, our personnel for betterment, not only of ourselves, but of this great county. Bless this day, we pray and ask in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to officially call our meeting to order. The planning and zoning items was advertised for the February 6, 2024 Board of Commissioner meeting, but has been postponed by staff. Andrea Daniels of McDonough Appeals Administrative Interpretation of the Unified Land Development Code, leading to a code enforcement citation for property located at 135 Watts Lake Road in Land Lot 49 of the 11th District. The property consists of 3.58 plus acres, and the request is for the parking and storage of commercial vehicles. This item has been postponed, so if anyone is here for this item, you can be dismissed. We're going to have a proclamation for the Henry County Fire Rescue 50th Anniversary. Is Nick here?
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. I have a proclamation for your recognition of Henry County Fire Rescue upon the occasion of the department's 50th anniversary. And it reads, whereas the Henry County Fire Department was originally organized in 1974 as a group of individual fire companies serving various communities in Henry County. And whereas in 1974, the various independent fire companies organized, resulting in the formation of the largest fire district in the county. And whereas in the early 1980s, Henry County Emergency Medical Services EMS and the Henry County Fire Department merged into one entity and began serving Henry County as a full-time, 24-hour-a-day fire EMS service. And whereas the current Henry County Fire Rescue Department has evolved into a public service agency that consists of nearly 400 members charged with providing fire and EMS services to our population of more than 250,000 residents. And whereas the Henry County Fire Rescue Department is celebrating 50 years of service, protecting the entire community with honor, dedication, and integrity. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Henry County Fire Rescue Department on the occasion of his 50th anniversary and honors the men and women who have bravely served the county and the community for the past five decades, especially those who continue to uphold that legacy of service today. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners extends its serious gratitude to all those who have shaped such an outstanding organization and look forward to what the future brings for Henry County.
As I say, we have our chief, Chief Jonathan Burnett, and our assistant chief, Chief Pat Wilson here. Chief Burnett, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Board, Vice Chair, constituents. What an honor and a privilege it is to currently serve as the fire chief for Henry County Fire Rescue. You know, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for several of the men and women that standing behind me. We have a wide variety of personnel here today, from one of our very first chiefs that ever served in the organization, who's been in the fire service for over 50 years, all the way to, you know, members who have just started in the organization. So it's an honor and a privilege again to be where we're at here today. I want to thank the men and women that come before us, who've laid the foundation to get us to this point. And then hopefully we're able to, you know, keep building on that foundation and leave it just a little bit better than we found it, you know, for that next generation to come for the next 50 years. So thank you for today and at this time. I'd like to invite everybody here that has served as a retiree or who currently serves as a member of the organization, invite them up for one quick picture, if you don't mind. Thank you.
And what I'd like to do is ask our board to stay up here and stand. And then if everyone would come and stand in front of us, in front of the dais here. The old, the first, the first part. Tall people in the back, short people in the front. Y'all come on. Why is all the short people trying to get in the back?
Chair, you see me?
Uh-uh. We might have to get in the chair.
Can the commissioners come down front, please? Because we can't see back there. There's too many tall fire. Yeah, sitting in the front, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, you have to get up.
Everybody look right here for me, please. Let's take two, three pictures. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more?
I tried really hard.
One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Johnny Wilson, we want to thank you for your service. For those that don't know, Commissioner Wilson is a retired from the fire department as well. So we want to thank you for all your years of service.
Chair, Mr. Ross, I have an additional proclamation for your recognition of February 2024 as National Black History Month. And it reads, whereas National Black History Month's origins began in 1915, when historian and author Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, now known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and designated a week in February to acknowledge black history. And whereas the civil rights movement advocated for an official shift from Black History Week to Black History Month. And in 1976, on the 50th anniversary of the beginning of Negro History Week, the Association for the Study of African-American History made the shift to Black History Month. And whereas Black History Month celebrates the vast contributions of Black Americans excuse me, Black Americans to our country, and recognizes that black history is American history and that black culture, stories, and triumphs are at the core of who we are as a nation. And whereas Black History Month is a time to celebrate the fullness of African-American history and culture and to remind all Americans of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity, as well as the many accomplishments in every field from science and the arts to politics and religion. And whereas this year, the Black History Month theme is African-Americans and the Arts, which explores the great influence that African-Americans have had in the fields of music, film, fashion, visual and performing arts, folklore, literature, language, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. And whereas Henry County is the proud home of many trailblazers in black history, and moreover, is home to many dynamic African-Americans who are striving today to set the standard and will become proud history makers of tomorrow. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes and honors the month of February as Black History Month and urges all people to recognize and celebrate the important and incredible contributions of Black Americans, not only in the month of February, but throughout the entire year, this day, sixth day of February. Chair and Commissioners, can we get a picture of you with the county manager, please, over here?
Okay, I promise I won't have to get up again. One other thing that we'd like to celebrate as well, since we are celebrating and recognizing, today should be a national holiday, but it's not. But we would like to wish Commissioner Johnny Wilson a happy birthday. I won't tell them how old you are, Johnny, but your wife texted me and told me.
I've been retired 11 years, so I'll let you do the math.
You gonna sing? We're going to begin with our presentations. We have a presentation from Camp Fresh of Henry County and Second Chance Outreach Life Center, unhoused veterans facility. The presenter is Candy Saunders at New Beginning Global Outreach Center. If she could come forward and begin the presentation. And Stephanie, you have the time? Okay.
You are not hidden. There's never been a moment you were forgotten. You are not hopeless. Though you have been broken, your innocence stolen.
All of us long we've been taking a deeper look into the Atlanta area's struggle to end.
People don't choose to be homeless. Situations happen. You don't need to get into a tough spot. You can finally help.
Still health and addiction play a role, but there's so much more.
I just want to give up. I didn't know.
There are shelters, supportive housing, designated encampments, all aiming to end homelessness. It's just not enough.
Most communities have some dedicated revenue stream in addition to what they get from HUD.
Or it's a lack of funding, affordable housing, shelters, or jobs. The one thing every person experiencing homelessness could use.
I cannot be covered over and over. You're not defenseless. I'll be your shelter. I'll be your armor. I hear you whisper underneath your breath. I hear your rest always. Your rest always. I will send out an army to find you in the middle of the darkest night. It's true. I will rescue you. I will never stop marching to reach you in the middle of the hardest fight. It's true. I will rescue you. I hear the whisper underneath your breath. I hear you whisper, you have nothing left. I will send out an army to find you in the middle of the darkest night. It's true. I will rescue you. I will never stop marching to reach you in the middle of the hardest fight. It's true. I will rescue you. Oh, I will rescue you. I will send out an army to find you in the middle of the darkest night. It's true. I will rescue you. There is no distance. I cannot be covered over and over. You're not defenseless. I'll be your shelter. I'll be your armor. I hear you whisper underneath your breath. I hear your rest always. Your rest always.
Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair and everyone in their respective places, thank you for having us this morning. My name is Reginald Jordan. I am presenting on behalf of Camp Fresh. And we are in a pursuit to eradicate veteran homelessness in the United States. So the mission for us is to transform the lives of veterans and families who are unhoused, hungry, and maybe struggling with difficulties in life. We offer amenities and services for people from all backgrounds and walks of life with the hopes of becoming a catalyst in their comeback stories. Right now, the problem is that there are more than 50,000 homeless veterans in the United States. And more directly, in the greater Atlanta area, encompassing the city and its surrounding counties, including Henry, in 2022, which that count is done every two years, so we're waiting on updated numbers, there were a total of 2,017 individuals experiencing homelessness that they were able to count. That does not include the invisible homeless as well. Roughly 20% of those individuals are unhoused veterans. And so with that being said, the problem is improvement in homelessness was a strong initiative back in 2010, and it slowed down with the resurgence in 2016. Veterans face joblessness, high suicide rates, and hopelessness due to homelessness. Sometimes that homelessness is a result of PTSD and not having the right wraparound services. Sometimes that comes from addiction to also deal with their experiences in war and in combat and in service. There's also a lack of affordable housing compounds, and that compounds the issue, which despite efforts from nonprofits and volunteers. Our goal is to bring up awareness of the problems and its solutions need the amplification within the general population and business communities. Homelessness results in unforeseen circumstances, where it is our steadfast belief that being unhoused is not a matter of choice, but rather a complex socioeconomic issue that demands comprehensive community and governmental intentional action. Me personally, I work for Henry County Schools, and we know the issues that we've had in recent days with, I mean, in recent months, with the internet outage, right? And in other counties, if there was not as fast of a response, it has been an issue where it took them nearly nine to 10 months, up to a year, to resolve those issues. And one thing that we pride ourselves in Henry County Schools is that six days after that issue happened, we were able to make payroll. But just imagine our community members, who are successful, career-oriented people with degrees in their careers, who are living paycheck to paycheck, and they had a situation like that come up, and they weren't able to make their ends meet that month. Or COVID-19, whereas at one point I was a substitute teacher in the system as well. And when substitute teaching was no longer available, because we were no longer in the schools, jobs ended, and people were caught off guard. And some people actually did result in homelessness, as you saw the young man in the video as well. He said that it was as a result of COVID-19. So the solution, the primary mission of Camp Fresh Incorporated is to provide transitional homes for unhoused U.S. veterans. That will extend to second chance as well, where we will also look at families and children. Providing homeless veterans with a secure and structured residential environment for a duration of 18 months or more, as we see fit, or as they see fit for their transition period. Our primary focus is on achieving ultimate rehabilitation by guiding participants towards a purpose-filled lifestyle through a transformation, excuse me, of their mindset. Veterans will sharpen their skill set by selecting a certified training and/or economic advancement course, and the goal is to integrate veterans back into the communities as productive members of our society. So within our 18-month program, we have a total of five major components. We focus on mental health within the intake treatment. It begins with a mental health assessment reviewed and approved by a licensed clinical social worker. And then we go into career training. Our staff is suited to provide training curriculums covering careers in phlebotomy, cosmetology, massage therapy, billing and coding, and medical assistance. Civil engagement will include a total of 40 hours or more of community service within our surrounding communities, and we'll also provide life skills based off of their initial needs assessment. We also provide housing, and upon program completion, we assist in arranging permanent housing until the participant chooses otherwise. And this is our executive team, led under the Chief Executive Officer Overseer, Richard Saunders, and our president, which is sitting right next to me, Apostle Candy Saunders. They both have over 20 years of experience in serving Henry County. Along with all of these leaders in their respective places, they all live in Henry County, work in Henry County, serve in Henry County. And they are capable of providing all of the wraparound services that we provide at Camp Fresh and Second Chance. All of these leaders are leaders in their respective places and are ready and willing to serve our community. Our partners, both present and futures, hopefully Henry County government. But we also have partnerships, and we have grants and scholarships that we're working on with Walmart, Publix, Kroger, and all of these other businesses. We also have an architect who is working on our future plans, Calidon Design Build. And we have other members within our community who are willing to assist the charge that we have as Camp Fresh. So this is actually one of our exhibits, our conceptual site plans. We have a community of tiny homes that we would like to build in the future. Right now, we're working out of a couple of residences within Henry County and Clayton County, where we are housing veterans right now as we speak. And we would love to expand our reach, which is what we're here for today. We also have tiny homes and a community squadron plan with a community center, where we will be able to provide housing, trainings. We have all of those services that we mentioned earlier, that we will house within our facilities. And ultimately, we do this because our veterans deserve better. All people deserve better. But specifically right now, we're focusing on veterans, because we are a group of people, some of which are veterans. We experience the inadequacies that our governments have for our veterans when they return back to society, as well as we just believe they deserve better. They've served, they've sacrificed, and it's our charge to do that as well. They've served, they've sacrificed, and it's our charge to do that as well. Do we have any questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Lewis?
First of all, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Saunders, for having us out. We were actually, me and Madam Chair, were able to go visit your facilities and to see what you have to offer for the veterans. So I just wanted to say I appreciate everything that you're already doing for our community. The only question I do have, because you were very comprehensive when we visited, but my question is, with the site plan that you just gave us, is that land that you already own? This is land that you're trying to acquire? What is that?
It is definitely land we're trying to acquire.
Okay.
Also have a couple of facilities, other than the facility that we currently have, that we are acquiring as well. And if I could get maybe one minute for Mr. Galloway to tell you a little bit about those tiny homes that he's going to be building with the land that we are acquiring at this particular time, if that would be okay?
So is that something that you all already have the funding for?
We are working on the funding. We have a couple of grants out there now, you know, and that's one of the reasons why we are here, to get some funding, you know, from Henry County as well. So we do have grants out there that we are...
Is this location located in Henry? Because I know one of the facilities that we visited was in Clayton County.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can't fund anything outside of Henry County. It would have to be located within our county.
Absolutely, you're absolutely, yes, we understand that very much, but that's where we started. So where we are currently looking at is some property here in Henry County that, you know, Commissioner Harris have taken a look at as well. So we do have a couple of properties that we are acquiring for. That's why we need the help. Currently, we do have... Our real estate agent is here too. She's already put, you know, bids on the two properties that we are acquiring. Which will be Dr. Franklin.
Okay. Well, one of the things I want to make sure that you are introduced, Shannon, can you please stand up, come up for me, please? Yeah. Shannon is in charge of our community and development department, and she would handle any type of funding that would be, that would meet the requirements. And so you definitely need to make sure that you stay connected to her with regards to that. And, you know, I know the work that you do in the community, we appreciate it, and look forward to how we can, you know, be able to address this issue, because we do have homeless veterans right here in Henry County.
Yes, ma'am, and I do want to say, we do have a business license that we have got last year in Henry County. I have another residential property that is in Henry County that we have been approved to have at least three veterans in that particular location too. This year is the second year that we paid our license for that, and that property is in Henry County. And we also have a training center that is located in Henry County as well, that we do the mental health and the different trainings and the programs that you just saw on the screen. That's where we do our training at, and that is located in Henry County, off of North Henry Boulevard in Henry County. And we've been in that particular location since 2003. So we've been working on this for a long time.
Right. Have you done any connections with Southern Crescent Technical College? Because I see a lot of the careers that you are, certifications that you offer are some of the same things that the technical college offer. Have you done any type of partnership or collaboration with them?
No, ma'am, but what I have did, my background, of course, is college. I've been working in the college industry as a director of the college for, since 2005. So we have a lot of resources in terms of making sure that the veterans not only have a facility to live in, but they also, it's an 18-month program where they will be there in the facility for 18 months. And part of that stay there will be curriculums like what we discussed on the slides. And they not only will complete the program, but they will be certified. All of our staff is certified directors, and I acquired all of that just from my experience in the college. You know, and we had to do at least 97% of graduation, and we also had to place them in their career of study. And I have those resources that we're working out of, you know, from the 2005 up until two years ago when I retired.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Thomas, if you have any questions?
I just want to thank you so much for the work that you're doing in the community and your presentation. It's good to know that you have a history of doing this. I did also have the opportunity to go out and see your facility, your training facility, and your living facility. It is something that we definitely can duplicate here in Henry County. But more than anything, we want people who are credible, who has the, as you stated, different certifications in place, who are not practicing but know what they're doing to take care of our veterans. Because our veterans have gone through so much, so they don't want to come to another fiasco that's saying they're doing things and it's not happening. So I want to thank you for that. And you answered the other question, because my question was, what was your ask here today? And I didn't, I think you were answering that when you answered Chaharillo, that you're looking for support for this program. It would be interesting to see your actual project or your budgets that you want to put before us, because we need a presentation. Does anyone know that I want to know what it is that we're getting involved in? So look for a full presentation or some type of full package on your goals, your missions, the whole gamut, including your budget outlay, is what I would like to see.
Sure.
Thank you very much for your services.
Yeah, and thank you. And like I said, just be in touch with Shannon, and she can help you through the process.
Thank you. Yes, good morning. I just wanted to introduce myself as Kenyatta Franklin. I am working as the realtor and the property manager, just to add to what you were saying, Madam Commissioner, with regard to what we're asking today. That project that you all are seeing is for the future. That is something that, the land that we're looking at, that is off a ways, two to five years. However, right now, we're looking at assisted living, multifamily, commercial properties that we can get into and move into today or tomorrow, as soon as we have the funding. So just to give you an idea of what it is that we're looking for today, and what two properties that we're specing right now, one of them is 3084, and that is located here in Henry County, is this active assisted living project that we are looking to acquire. And they are asking 3.5 million for that property, and that is why we are here, to ask for help with regards to funding, because we are looking at projects that are available today.
So again, you need to get with Shannon. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item we have coming up for presentation is Henry County Bus Stops Creative Placemaking Plan. Ty?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Today I have Deanna Murphy with Seismar Group, who's working on our project with Henry County Bus Placemaking Plan. She has a presentation for us to look.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me this morning. I'm Deanna Murphy with Seismar Group. We're an Atlanta-based architecture and planning firm, and we are thrilled to be the consultant working on this very exciting and unique plan. So today, I just have a brief presentation to give you an overview of what this project is, our team members, looking at the scope and schedule, and then we'll talk a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish and how we're going to go about that, especially through the lens of community outreach and engagement. So this is our planning team. As I mentioned, Seismar Group, we are the lead planning firm. We have three partners. We have Veridian Studios, it's a landscape architect local to the area. We have Dashboard, who is overseeing our community arts, as well as helping us with creative community engagement. And then we have VHB, a transportation firm, who's actually working on transportation planning here currently and along this corridor. I wanted to start with this snippet. This actually came from the request for proposal that was put out, and it's that transit creative placemaking intentionally makes transit stops into community amenities. They can function as safe and clean places to wait for the bus, as well as portals for information, locations for accessing needs, and venues for storytelling. And that really is the starting point for this project. What we're tasked with is looking at LB17, the new proposed bus route, that Ty can give some more information on, that you all have acquired a bus for and are working on stop locations. In line with that, we are looking how to make these stops more attractive, more indicative of the community, and provide dignity for those who use these bus stops. You can see the route here. It goes through not only Henry County, but also Stockbridge and McDonough. So we do have partnership in this project with both cities. And our overall scope of work really starts with getting community engagement. This route will be used by community members, and so we want to make sure that that's where we really start. Our focus is understanding who will use this, what their amen, what needs they have in terms of amenities for that stop, and how we can make this a comfortable and safe place for them. So our first scope of work is that engagement. We have developed a project logo so that we can help brand the project throughout. And you can see that on the bottom left, we played off of the new logo that the county has built, and shows more of a bus stop shelter component with a bus, a little fun play on that current logo. We will have three community meetings throughout this process. We'll be doing one-on-one interviews, and that will include interviews with you all, so we look forward to engaging you in the next month or so. We'll have a community survey that goes out, and then we'll also meet with the Atlanta Regional Commission and other, and the transit agencies here, to make sure that what we are proposing is implementable. Our plan development steps include looking at past studies, especially the transportation plan that was recently done. We'll look at case studies for areas that have done creative bus stops and this transit placemaking concepts, to make sure that we're pulling from national case studies that have done this well. We'll do a one-day design workshop, and that's where we'll bring the community together, our key stakeholders, and our project team to really come up with design concepts. And that's really when we'll start to determine what this can start to become. And then from there, we're really moving into implementation. How do we finalize this, make it truly implementable and fit into the location? We will zoom into one bus stop. We're going to be looking at three different locations overall, and look at the safety of those stops, what those bus stop shelters could become, other amenities to make sure that people can get to and from these stations appropriately. But we'll zoom into one specifically and have that as a, have a budget in terms of cost, understanding how to truly implement that one stop as the starting point for this project. Our overall schedule runs from, we started, kicked off in December, and will run to January of 2025, so just over a year-long process. And these are the project goals. This has really come from some of our initial conversations with staff, and we'll be continuing to morph these goals to meet the needs of the community. But overall, it's really that we want to make sure this project gets community buy-in, and that people are excited to have this bus route, excited to have the amenities that will come with that, and really safe and creative stops. We want to make sure that this is creating that accessibility and safety for all users. We want to make sure that funding is identified, so that moving forward, there is a plan of action to implement. And with that, we'll give a phased implementation plan. And considering equity throughout the process is really important for us and for a successful project, and then making sure that this truly is an asset to the community. Our community engagement process is listed here. I won't go into detail with all of it. As I mentioned, we have three community meetings. We will also engage the arts community, and on the next slide, I'll go into some detail on that. So we have partnered with Dashboard, which is a local nonprofit arts organization here in Atlanta. And what we have done is worked with them and the Atlanta Regional Commission to put together a list of artists and cultural bureaus here locally in Henry County. We're using that format to really select some volunteers who we are going to compensate for their time, but to become ambassadors for the arts and represent the artist community here. They'll be involved in all of our community meetings, our design workshops, so we have some local artists really invested in the project. We'll take them on a bus route. We're going to ask them to sketch while they're on the bus route, so that we can have artwork that comes out of this as well, so this can really become a truly inclusive art project. And they'll work with local schools as well to formulate more artistic pieces for the route. So our next steps is really to dive into that local artist forum. We are looking at doing that at the end of this month. And then to start our one-on-one interviews and engage with you all. And then from there, we'll have our first project advisory meeting, which is our steering committee that will help guide the process. And we are here for any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
I just have one question. Do you have a scheduled ride-along that we can do for the routes?
Yeah, that's a great idea. So we are planning a tour, a little study tour. I think we'll just have to work with you all to make sure we don't initiate a quorum in the process. Absolutely.
Commissioner?
No, thank you.
Lewis? Thomas?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If we could have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, February 6 at 9:00 a.m. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution approving clarification language for the current intergovernmental agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and the Henry County Development Authority regarding mighty hero homes. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to renew an intergovernmental agreement with the Governmental Services Authority regarding property for the neighborhood stabilization program. Under courts, state court, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners granting approval for the Henry County DUI drug court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, for FY '25. Under elections and registration, we have a resolution correcting a Scribner's era regarding Resolution Number 24-27, setting the 2024 qualifying fees for elected county offices. Under fire rescue, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear and accessories at a discounted price contract with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed upon renewals from Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., for Henry County Fire Rescue. Under financial services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to declare three cameras, two drones, and one table for disposal through the online auction process via gobdeals.com. We also have a resolution approving the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act fiscal recovery funds in the amount of $4,575,000 for economic development and future activities that will generate jobs and businesses in the community. We also have a resolution approving the allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act fiscal recovery funds in the amount of $4,230,453 for community development. Under SPOST, we have a resolution approving a condemnation on Berg Road, Parcel Number 38. We have a resolution approving condemnation on Berg Road, Parcel 42. And then our final item is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the funding of wetland credits for Flippin Road in the amount of $864,000. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board regarding the consent agenda?
I'd like to see, under financial services, have the resolution B and C removed from the... I'd like to see under financial services, have the Resolution B and C removed from the consent. Move to the regular agenda, please.
Okay, all right. We'll move those to the regular agenda, yes.
And Chair Mike.
See, on the county attorney, letter A, move to the move to the regular agenda for clarification.
Okay, all right.
I have a question for fire rescue, real quick.
If someone.
JV.
Chief, if you could come forward.
Chief, thank you. The question is. I know the turnout gear is much needed. My question is, does this include the extra turnout gear for the supply room that is needed where we've been trying to do 10 extra turnout suits for new recruits and/or damaged gear?
It'll allow us to to add some of that gear in there if we need to, yes, sir. So sometimes what we do is the gear that has gone past its expiration date that we're not going to use in like an IDOLH environment, an immediate dangerous to life and health environment. We'll take that gear and we'll give it to the recruits. We call it, you know, training gear or Red X gear. It's not to be used in a live fire situation. But throughout that that 22-week process of recruit school, they're going to they're going to damage a lot of gear, you know. So we we take that old expired gear, give it to the recruits. So we're not buying them the brand-new turnout gear for the training process. Until they graduate, once they graduate, then they'll be able to get the new gear. So this will encompass the some of the the loner gear sets that we that we've talked about. And it also allows to, you know, refill or backfill that that training gear stock as well.
Okay, I was wanting to make sure that was included in that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Okay, here none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the items removed that was requested before?
I move to approve consent agenda with the items removed.
Okay. Got a motion, second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if we could. Just let me. Okay, financial services. So since we have financial services coming up, after you make your presentation from the regular agenda, then we're going to have the items B and C. Just cover the items for B and C that was moved from the consent agenda. Financial services, who's who's presenting? Benita, mid-year budget.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Henry County Community. What you have before you is a resolution to approve a mid-year budget amendment to the FY '24 general fund, CDBG fund, grant fund, cares and airport fund budgets. The purpose of the mid-year budget adjustment is to adjust our spending levels to the actual tax collections, which were not known at the time of the original budget was adopted. This amendment allows the county the opportunity to allocate funding for one-time expenses and priorities for which funds were not available when the budget was being considered. Finally, additional funding can be provided to departments to cover any new programs, initiatives or operating expenses that either were not included, not fully funded, or where expenses may have exceeded the original departmental budget amount set for the fiscal year. This year, we received about $4.5 million of additional departmental budget requests during our mid-year budget review. However, based upon known BLC priorities requiring additional funding, we have asked departments to temper expectations either by utilizing their current budgets or to reclassify or fill the approximately 190 general fund vacancies on the books to obtain the request now or wait until the FY '25 budget, which is about to begin, to address some of these requests. Therefore, of the $9.6 million of projected general fund revenue surplus, financial services is proposing that we use only $2.1 million to increase our FY '24 general fund departmental budgets and set aside the remaining $7.5 million in fund balance for future capital and public facility authority bond payments. We also have $1.1 million of interdepartmental transfers to be recorded. The transfer of small business restart funds to community development in the amount of $779,000 and the cotton fields transfer to Parks and Rec in the amount of $307,000. The departmental budget increase of $2.1 million and the interdepartmental transfer of $1.1 million. These two items combined would increase our FY '24 general fund budget from $232 million to $235.2 million. Some of the items that are included in the proposed $2.1 million of departmental adjustments are $829,000 in public safety overtime and step increases, $450,000 for contract and service cost increases, $179,000 in funding for the Henry County Library staff pay increases, $144,000 for additional elections and voter registration personnel, $101,000 for mental health expenses for the jail, including specialized equipment and uniforms, $100,000 for the for the summer concert series, $65,000 in increased gasoline costs and $277,000 for other operational cost increases such as small equipment, supplies, communications expenses, 50th anniversary cost, increased utilities, dues and fees. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
On the back of the one slide for me.
Okay.
On the public safety side, it says $229,000 for overtime step increases. Now, was the step increases not included in the original budget?
So, no, those are done twice a year in October and April. So this is trying to pick up the increases that are going to be done in April.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Robinson. Okay, Commissioner Angler.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes, I just want to go through a few things. First of all, thank you for the presentation. And Commissioner Wilson did ask one of my questions. I was wondering about the overtime and step increases, if they weren't budgeted ahead of time. But you're saying this is for step increases that will happen. So I guess I guess I do have a question with that, though. So if we had did not have this additional tax revenue coming in, how would we have funded the step increases?
We would have just had to wait. So like we always just try to evaluate and see what our revenue is going to be and see if we're going to be able to make any additional adjustments. And we never make any promises. We always tell the departments that we need to evaluate at the six-month mark and see if we're going to be able to make any adjustments at that time.
And I do agree with holding off on some of the departmental requests, especially seeing as we have the number of vacancies that we have. That makes sense to to not fund additional requests when you already have vacancies. That makes sense. I do agree with the $179,000 funding for the Henry County Library staff. I know we've been been asking for that for a while. So thank you very much for putting that in. It's something that was well deserved. Could you explain the summer concert series funding for those who are not aware of what that is?
JP, our county manager. And I would like to say too, on the public safety overtime, a lot of that is due to events that we have to have public safety at that is not that was not calculated in the budget. It also covers when commissioners have events that we have to have public safety at events. So. Go ahead, JP.
Good morning, everyone. The summer concert series is something that we're potentially looking to do for our 50th anniversary. It would be three months out of the summer, July, August and September. And so this would help fund those concerts that would be potentially held at Heritage, the arena. And it would be for the public.
It's free to the public.
Free to the public, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. The only other thing I have, I know that we're setting $7.5 million aside for fund balance for future capital bond repayments. So this is in regard to like the New Justice Center, New Public Safety Center, those those types of things. That's what we're talking about. Okay. I do have one caveat that that I want to present. And this is a proposal that I've talked about with my other other commissioners. And I do understand that we do have future capital bond repayments that that will be necessary for us to set aside money for. And I will let Commissioner Thomas speak before I do my total proposal. But I do want to point out that there are things that are immediate for us. I know for each commissioner, we have things in our district that are immediate. We have traffic needs, we have potholes. So we have potholes on Mount Olive, we have potholes on Valley Hill, we have potholes on Old Congress. We have intersection improvements that are needed in District One. There are there are many, many immediate needs that we have that we currently do not fund. And, you know, the the questions that we get from our residents and our constituents continually is, why can't you fix this? Why can't you fix this? Well, we need this, we need this. And and we have to tell them, like, well, we don't have the money to fix it right now. So it's it's a hard thing to say to people when, you know, they look at their property taxes and their property taxes have have skyrocketed through no fault of the counties. It's not the county's fault that the property taxes have gone up. It's just due to the valuations that are going up. However, in return for those property taxes that all of us pay, we do expect services to be rendered to to the public. So with that, I will have a proposal. I'll let Commissioner Thomas speak first. But I do think there needs to be some money set aside for the immediate needs of the community, things that are tangible, that people can see. And once again, I'll reserve my motion until Commissioner Thomas speaks.
Okay, I would like for David to come up and talk about the capital bond repayment. Because I need for people to understand why we have to do this. And I know that we all have needs and you all talk about the districts. But the chair wants to do things too. So if it's going to be some money set aside, it's going to be have to be for all six of us. And Rocky, I want you to be prepared to come and talk about the potholes and the roads. Go ahead, David.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County Community. You want me to address the Public Facility Authority?
What we said $7.5 aside, so we we need to understand why we're doing this.
Okay, so I'll start with an explanation of my role. So my role is, as a planner, is to provide my county manager, this board with the best recommendations that we can come up with so that you can make informed decisions for the financial health of this community, the Henry County Community. Commissioner Lewis touched on immediate needs. Well, several years ago, the immediate need was for a justice center. Us knowing that a justice center probably wouldn't care on a SPOS, our courts being overcrowded, our DAs making requests for additional office space. The immediate need then was what are we going to do about our justice center? Subsequent to that, a year subsequent to that, our sheriff came and made a presentation of an immediate need where his housing, the jail, was overcrowded. And so again, knowing that that might not be on a SPOS, we wanted to plan to address that immediate need. Setting aside those plans, we set aside a funding plan for that. Should we decide to issue bonds to address the immediate needs of the courts, the sheriff, we needed to set aside funding for that for payment. Currently, we haven't raised our mileage rate in close to six years. So every time we have an increase or some form of surplus at the end of the year, we've been attempting to set aside funding to address those immediate needs that were identified at that time. So currently, this plan addresses what those immediate needs were then so that we can address them when they come up. The other immediate need Commissioner Lewis is talking about is the roads. So a lot of our roads are covered by our Department of Transportation's budget, which we've been able to increase. This is the Department of Transportation. They go out, they pave the roads, we allow money for them to fill potholes, asphalt. And Mr. Romero, Director Romero is going to come up and talk about that. But we've increased the Department of Transportation's budget to address those. Now, the scheduling of that, he probably will talk to. But the funding for that, we do provide. We also provide funding for roads and transportation, not only in our current T-SPOS for projects that have been identified, but in our SPOS V for projects that have been identified. And now with our upcoming SPOS VI, projects are going to be identified where roads can be addressed. So I don't think it would be prudent, I don't think, and it's not my recommendation, to set aside a million dollars for roads when we have not addressed the upcoming need, which was immediate several years ago, for our courts, our sheriff and other opportunities.
Okay, I have a question for you. So.
Yes, sir.
You saying we could go and put it on SPOS, correct? Our roads, next SPOS, right?
I'm not saying we can. I'm saying during the SPOS meetings, tho- those projects get discussed. Not only there's a SPOS committee that's set up where various members of the committee discuss what they want as projects on the list. Then that list, and Mr. Romero is going to address that, then that list is pared down as to what's important. And then what what they believe would be passed in each district, that's how those those needs get addressed.
Gotcha. Actually, Mr. Romero, could you go ahead and come up? Because I'll I'll ask you, because this will be in conjunction.
Good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
So regarding resurfacing or patching, as you know, we have had a lot of rain. So of course, we have a lot of issues with patching. So going back with what David has said, Mr. Smith, is $1 million is really not going to give us much. We won't be able to do much with $1 million.
I'm not asking for $1 million.
So, okay. So resurfacing right now is about, we do FDR, it's close, close to $1 million a mile. So a lot of the roads that we have where you've seen a lot of patching issues is really have a bad base. There's no base under it underneath. So we can throw money, patch and patching, but really we need to go ahead and do a full-depth reclamation, what we call FDR.
No, I I agree with that. And right now, just just for hypothetical, say, say there's a road that needs to be be done. If we wait and put it on the next SPOS, let's say if it actually gets added to next SPOS, which was not even going to be voted on until November.
Correct.
So then you have to wait for collections to start. Then you have to get the money. Then you have to go ahead and identify the project, finance the project. So if there's a road that needs to be repaid right now, we don't take action, say, within the next six months. How 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 early can we expect that road to get completed?
If we have to wait for the next SPOS, you're probably looking at around May of next year. Because what we can do is once, if SPOS pass in November, of course, collection will start April. We can identify those roads now and put out a bid prior to April. That way, it can be approved by the board, let's say, first of April. So we can advertise in February, approve in April, and in May, we can start the resurfacing.
I I have projects right now that have been identified, funded, since I started off the year ago, and they haven't started yet.
Well, we we do have the LME.
I'm talking about LME projects.
And those are those are currently out for bid. What we did, Commissioner, we combined 23 and 24 to be able to have more volume. The more more miles, the better the price. So that that bid is open. So that, that bid is opening this February fourteenth, which is, I believe is next Wednesday. And we'll be bringing that to the board, the second meeting in, in February. So we should be able to start those uh, late March.
I understand that. Okay, well, once again, I, I'll let Commissioner Thomas speak, because it's not just, it's not just our roads, it's not just resurfacing. There are other needs that commissioners have in their districts. We have parks that um, need funding, and I know we just transferred three hundred thousand dollars over from Cotton Fields over to Parks and Rec. But there are, there are a lot of needs that we have, and right now, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for, but I'm gonna speak for my colleagues in that our hands are tied with things that we know need to take place in our districts. And we're, we're just waiting at the mercy of a possible budget amendment, possible stuff. It's hard, it's hard to go tell our residents that possibly, we might get to your concern in three or four years, when they pay taxes every year.
Commissioner, we're not at the mercy of the timing. We're at the mercy of a millage rate, we're at the mercy of a frozen homestead exemption. I just want to make that clear. And so even though uh, a part of our property taxes go up due to inflation, we're constrained by approximately twenty million dollars that we don't collect from the frozen homestead exemption. We're constrained, where we're only collecting with that additional, and you've just seen it now. Only seven point five million dollars is becoming available from eventual, which may not happen, surplus. We're constrained by cost increasing. So to address what we're at the mercy of are those constraints, not that. So uh, what you're talking about is timing. Since twenty eighteen, when the county manager was here, she's addressed the department needs gradually, based upon a plan, based upon when are we going to receive additional money. She's addressed the department needs from a operational standpoint. She's addressed the department needs from a salary and benefit standpoint, every year, making certain that there's something set aside. Now I wanna talk about services. You wanna talk about Parks and Rec. Uh, you have several projects that are about to get started, not only from, from SPOLOSS, but they've been funded from the general fund operations, from impact fee operations, that are going to be significant for uh, this county. Services have increased, our police officers have increased. Our vehicles, they weren't new uh, before the county manager got here. But I'm certain a few of our officers are happy for the vehicles that they're now driving around in. So we're addressing the needs, but without proper planning, without uh, taking a conservative approach to how we approach these things, um, it could be very difficult. And so I agree with Director Romero, uh, he has a budget, they address, they address the needs as, as they come up, and we will continue to, to pursue that course.
And everything that you've listed, we've supported. We've supported the new vehicles, we've supported the additional.
Yes, sir, this board has been very supportive.
We've supported all of that, so we're asking you to support us.
I'm asking for the board to be steadfast in our conservative approach to how we have a plan that has worked for us for five years with a constraint of a millage rate and a frozen homestead exemption.
I appreciate that.
And, and, and you know, what I like to say too, um, is that this county has grown a lot faster than the money that we have in the bucket. You all keep approving developments, the county keeps growing, of course, the needs keep growing. We inherited a lot, you had uh, commission boards that previously did not invest in certain things as they should have. And so now, people like yourself, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Anglin, you know, it, it's unfortunate, but you inherited a lot of issues. And so, it's just like your budget at home. You gonna take care of what's important first, and you prioritize. And so that is exactly what we have to do here. We have to be fiscally responsible and financially sound uh, in order for us to continue to have this triple A bonding that we have, rating that we have, and uh, continue to move forward. I would love to have my road paved in my neighborhood, but at the end of the day, uh, I know I'm probably way down the list. And I'm sure that there are other constituents that like to have their roads paved as well. And if concentration had been done on this through previous boards, we wouldn't be even having this conversation today. And so, um, I think that staff has done a great job in prioritizing and putting plans together to bring before us to make these decisions. And so, uh, I just wanna thank you all for the work that you all have done. Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, and I do want to uh, support Commissioner Lewis in the fact that there are needs in different districts that we know about, and that we are constantly faced with, and we need answers as to how to answer those questions. Uh, I did a town hall last night, and there are questions all around, as to what are we doing and why are you doing? And yes, I got hung up on by another person who said, doesn't everybody report to that board of commissioners? And they think we just make things happen, it's not like that. But I do have some questions about what we're doing. We're supposed to be reallocating this overage money, and some of the things I see here are things that should be done with the regular budget. So I'm thinking about, if we have some overages here, we should be a little bit creative in how we use the overages to take care of the community. I don't see anything in here that really address uh, the senior citizens, uh, when it comes down to their facilities. And our senior citizens' facilities really need an upgrade. Some of them, when you walk into them, you know you're in a senior citizen facility, and you shouldn't buy, you shouldn't, by just using your five senses. And they need to have an upgrade, and we need money put into them, since we have an overage here, that we should take time to put money into our senior citizen facility, and the environment that our citizens are going into. And when we use our five senses and go into these buildings, that should not be an indication of where we are. Okay, so that's one thing. I do agree that we need to look at Parks and Recreation. Park and Recreation can be a return on investment. We have not maximized our parks and our recreation department to bring back the return that we need. I know JP is working relentless, trying to make sure that parks produce. And we've been able to do that with an upcoming disc golf competition. We've been able to do that with the, the thriving pickleball that's out there. And believe me, the pickleball people have had a meeting with me and said, this is what we want. And JP is answering that call with a master plan we put out there for JP Mosley. We've talked to uh, Commissioner Lewis about what he can do at Mount Carmel. We're trying to answer the call for the community. Again, these are overage dollars, and I like to see the overage dollars used in a more creative way. I know you have some definite needs that should be taken care of, the general fund that we normally do. We wanna find a way to be a little bit more creative and see how we can do that. I've always asked that we put aside money to purchase land. We're getting behind us accounting that we don't have land. We, and we have put in, I believe, if I'm correct, in our regular fund, we have a line item now that we're funding, so that when the management sees that there's some land available, they can go immediately and start the process of acquiring land on behalf of the county. Because we're losing, we don't have enough land in our own internal land bank to make some things happen. We need more parks, like the Madam Chair just stated, we're growing. But we're not growing our parks to make sure that happens, to, to answer that call. So I would like to see us make sure that we are put inside, putting aside money that we can buy land and bank that land for the county for use as we grow. And I wonder about our land bank, not for the public, but some form of land bank for the county that we can use as we grow, that we can take some of these overages, again, be creative in using those funds. Um, Ms. Renita, if I am correct, help me, because I went down this budget before today. And you have every, not you, but I guess your program codes things by numbers. So what is Department twenty-eight hundred? It says like subdepartment twenty-eight hundred, Department thirty-two ten, and we don't know what these departments are. I'm trying to look at descriptions to define what they are. So am I assuming that Department twenty-eight hundred is public safety of the police department?
Twenty-eight hundred is public defender.
Public defender?
Yes, ma'am. So right next to the department number is the department name, so it says public defender.
Yeah, public defender. So if I'm reading correct, we're looking at eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four thirty-two for that area? Is that correct?
No, ma'am. So for public defender, the total was seventy-one thousand, seven fourteen.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong number then, I think that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to get to the number where you have the overtime for the police officers. Going up and down your screen here.
So that's on line ninety-three for Department thirty-two ten?
Thirty-two ten. And that's right, you're right, apartment thirty-two ten, is that public safety?
That's for police, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my question is, I know we are putting that amount of money in for overtime and what have you, but do we not see any type of decrease since Stockbridge have their own police and we're not having to cover that extra territory and make those extra services over there? And are we not seeing a decrease in costs because of the annexations by the city taking in these other places?
No, ma'am, we're not.
Taking these other places off of our area?
No, the call volume has gone up. So even though Stockbridge started their police department, call volume has gone up. And there's nothing that you can do about the call volume and officers responding, and officers having to, to, to work the overtime. I mean.
I understand, but I'm saying, we have seen no relief with that entire department coming up in that city, and them annexing in all these properties. That, that's concerning to me, that we have seen no relief of that, and need to determine. I know we do get a report from our administration management about the support that we're offering these cities, and we need to decide how we're going to financially recoup some of these dollars, because we're doing an awful lot of services beyond the county. The next thing I wanted to ask is, on Department, I think it says thirty-four fifty, sixty-two thousand dollars. Let me try to find where that's at. You answered the thing about the uh, concerts and what have you. Where is it? I should've put down the line item. What's Department thirty-four fifty, please, Ms. Berit?
Uh, Senate Enforcement.
What line is that, ma'am?
Line one-ten.
Thank you.
And JP, I'd like for you to come up and talk about Parks and Rec and what you guys are going to be, just be ready, prepared to um, let us know what's going on in Parks and Rec, and.
So we put fifteen thousand dollars in for something, for the anniversary celebration, and forty-five hundred dollars in for equipment. This is all for fire department?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's for thirty, uh, Department thirty-five twenty, fire shift. So the fifteen thousand dollars is for the fiftieth anniversary items to celebrate their fiftieth anniversary. Um, so the banners for the stations, the decals for the uh, vehicles. That's fifteen thousand dollars, and then forty-five thousand dollars, they need uh, equipment to the, to repair uh, fire hoses to be inspected annually.
Okay. Again, I'd like to see something a little bit more creative down with those dollars. And what about this Toastmaster membership, and we're paying for that? What is that? What department is that, that we are paying for the Toastmasters?
So that is for communications, and that's for employee development?
Okay.
Melissa, you want to talk about that?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Um, yes, Toastmasters is a international organization, very well known, and it's known for public speaking and for leadership. And so about a year ago, in concert with the county manager and some other leaders, we came across Toastmasters as a great training tool for those who need to be better speakers or who wanna improve their leadership skills. Toastmasters, as compared to other training avenues, is a bargain. And uh, we have a very active Toastmasters group, we're in competitions, and we've really seen results. And I think that our county manager can attest to that, as well as some of our cluster leaders. So Toastmasters was, is a very good training tool for us at a very good cost. So that's, if that explains it for you.
So it's just one of your, your educational training programs that you use? Okay, I think what was misleading to me just to see it there, and I'm going, okay, what are we doing with that? But if it had been placed under maybe another title or something.
Right.
Be more explicit of what it is and what you're doing with it.
Okay, thank you. And we, we actually, Toastmasters is for everyone in the county, my, my department just has two people in it. But we have a lot of other people in the county who wanna further careers or leadership and better speaking skills. And so it's open to everyone who's a county government employee, and I think at this time, we have about thirty members. If we get more, we'll have to have a second club, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But that's what I wanted to bring out, some of those items that were specifically what they were and how they were being allocated. But more specifically, I'm definitely looking at how we can do something for our senior citizens' facilities. That's very dear to me.
JP, will you come and speak on that?
And the parks and recreations, and purchasing of land, and make sure we have that available. Now that we have some overages, that's what I'm thinking about, being creative with that. And I do sup, I do support what you're saying, that there are items in our district that we definitely need monies for and should be accountable for, so we can speak for our constituents.
Madam Chair, may I clear up the use of the term overage?
Okay, thank you, because we don't have, we hadn't collected it, so to say that we have it is incorrect. We do not have the seven point five, but we are anticipating.
Correct, thank you.
So we can't approve something that we don't, I mean, we can't spend something that we don't have.
Thank you.
Hello again. So um, with, with respect to Parks and Recreation, over the past couple of years, we've done quite a bit to um, help improve and enhance what we're offering and providing the residents in Parks and Recreation. Um, some of the marquee um, projects that most are aware of, SPOLOSS projects, we have the Aquatic Center and Water Park that we're currently uh, developing. They, they've started on that out there at the Cotton Fields property. Um, we've also started on a new recreation, state of the art recreation facility at Mount, North Mount Carmel Park. Um, some other things that we've completed was the uh, renovation, complete renovation of Mickey D Cochran Park, which is a beautiful park out there, um, that we have. Um, some other improvements that we've done, um, we've installed um, pickleball, outdoor pickleball courts at Hen Valley Park, re, uh, resurfaced the tennis courts over at Hen Valley Park. We are installing a fitness court at JP Mosley Park, uh, outdoor fitness court, which is gonna be phenomenal for the community. We're all, we also um, upgraded the golf court, uh, the disc golf course at JP Mosley to add nine holes, to make it a course that can be played nationally. Um, and it is rated as one of the top courses in, in this region. So I'm very excited about that. We've renovated concessions and restrooms. Um, we're in the process of renovating our ball fields. Um, we have some needs there that we're going to start laser grading some of the ball fields that haven't been addressed in many, many years. So that is going, that's what we are about to start as well, those improvements.
And what ball fields are those?
So uh, we're starting at Cochran Park. So we'll start with those ball fields at Cochran Park to laser grade those. And then on a priority basis, we'll start going to the other parks and laser grading some of those other fields as well.
Thank you.
Um, and I mean, we're constantly looking at many things we can do to uh, maintain what we have, improve what we have, and then add new as we continue to grow. Um, some of the things that we've done in senior services, if we've added the new fitness addition to Heritage Park, which has been a phenomenal addition to that senior center there. We have plenty, plenty of classes, we've renovated some inside, some of the rooms, we've added new sliding doors, um, ADA doors, so the seniors don't have to push anything, open anything. Um, we've renovated some of the restrooms in the senior centers. Um, and we're also looking to build a senior megaplex in this upcoming SPOLOSS if it's voted in. So we're looking to do some great things for the seniors and for our Parks and Recreation. and the things that we're doing right now.
So we had had some conversation about Hidden Valley Senior Center as well as the, uh, as Bear Creek. And, um, what enhancements are you all looking to do to those, uh, senior facilities?
So Bear Creek, um, it's, it's one of the newer senior centers. Um, we are looking to possibly add some amenities outdoors for the seniors over there. Maybe add a pickleball court out back. Um, all of this will be addressed in our Comprehensive Parks Master Plan that we're in the middle of. Um, it will provide recommendations on what we need and what the community needs and wants are as well. Um, at Hidden Valley, we're looking to possibly improve, uh, the indoors of that facility. And, and, and then we'll decide what other improvements are needed over at Hidden Valley.
Okay, and so all of this will be addressed in the Parks and Comprehensive Plan that you are currently working on? And you have met and had conversations with all of the commissioners regarding this, correct?
Yes, we have met with all the commissioners and we will be meeting with you all again very soon for, um, to discuss the initial findings. And then we will do a presentation, uh, hopefully within April, May area of the final findings and recommendation.
Okay, I know Commissioner Anglin had a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I got two questions, if you don't mind, for David. And so, I think David knows, I'm sympathetic to you and staff because I do what you do on a regular basis, but for about 300 people. Um, so putting together plans and addressing concerns, I know are always challenging and can be difficult. Um, with that being said, you brought up something that was really important. And I don't expect maybe an answer today, but I do think it is something that we probably need to address. How would you recommend moving forward with the given challenge of our constraints with the frozen homestead exemption? Because that gap, as you know, is only going to further multiply through our years here and once we are probably no longer here serving. Uh, that's my first question. And to that, understanding the plans that we made at our retreat and what we labeled as important, what suggestions would you make based off of understanding that moving forward also? So I know those are two loaded questions. I just want to put them out there so that we can address them maybe individually with each other to help, uh, with y'all. And, uh, thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Well, that's the transportation needs. Thank you, Commissioner Lewis, for opening that up for conversation. I've been up here, I was elected in '16, been here since '17, started '17. We've spent $26 million in District 1 for transportation. We could probably spend $26 more million the next couple of years. And I think that's true county-wide. And I think at one time, Rocky, we did a snapshot several years back of what it would take to bring us up to the whole county to where we can handle all the traffic. And I think that price tag, state roads and all, were like $3 billion, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
So we're not asking for $3 billion, but it's just how far behind we are. So our DOT, they go out and maintain our roads, our right-of-ways, the potholes. They do an amazing job, but they're limited what they can do because of manpower, staffing, trucks. So we're at 1,400 miles of centerline roads, is that correct?
That's pretty close, yes ma'am.
Yeah, and so...
About 12, yes.
That's a lot to maintain.
It is.
So what I'm asking, if we could put some priorities into our transportation improvements for as immediate needs, increase our on-call services to help us with those issues. Not just pothole patching, but we could go in and take some of these. And I'll use some examples down in District 1. We have, the bridges have approaches that need to be replaced on each side. So them are not potholes, you know, because you've been there, you've seen them. So increase on-call services to help get this squared away. I have numerous complaints of people that can't drive on our roads at night because they can't see the road because of the lack of striping and the RPMs. And I understand we're limited to what we can do for as, for funding for that, but we could increase that for county-wide because that's important for our seniors as well. Because they can't drive at night because they can't see the road. Um, and our shoulders, to maybe get some on-call services to help us with the shoulders because there's difference in the shoulders, be six or eight inches different than the surface of the road. Then when you can't see the road, then you run off the road. Then it could cause some issues there. It could cause, uh, some life-threatening events if, if we could get those squared away. So then, those things I hear about on a regular basis, the striping, the shoulders, and getting some of these areas patched up. And maybe we could increase our budget for on-call services, maybe in the DOT budget as well, where we could get this stuff done. But that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner Arms?
Um, I will say for District 2, I have been on calls with JP. So thank you so much, um, for that communication piece because I know there's some things that are going to be changing. And I appreciate that. I do want to go back and I agree with my colleagues when we're talking about our roads, okay? Um, I just, most recently, I've been here since June. And I most recently, or have been, asking with several potholes. And we're not talking Valley Hill, that's taken care of. Um, but when staff went out there, um, to me, it was minimal, um, patching. And when we're talking about, um, resurfacing, paving, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for quality when you're going out, um, doing the patching because, like you said, when the rain comes, um, you know, it's just gone, right? Um, so I guess I want to put faith in the people that are going to see, click, fix. I want to put faith in that system, okay? Um, because right now, a lot of people don't have faith in that, right? Um, so all I'm asking you, we're talking about manpower, what do you need? Because if we're going to do a plan, like we do our homes, we plan, right? But the more that you allow things to deteriorate, the more money you've got to spend, okay? So all I'm saying is to you, we're putting funding in different departments. We're asking, what do you need? Because our constituents want to see what we're doing. I know for my district, and again, my colleagues just said for their districts as well. Um, but if you're saying the manpower, David, how can we help them in that department? If that's the case. Um, just as Commissioner Anglin stated, what is the plan? I was not here for the re... So I just want to make sure. I was not here for the retreat. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're putting faith back into see, click, fix, quality. I have it just popping on my phone, you know, and I see it for different areas throughout the county, not just my district, right? And it's constant. So the planning piece is what I'm saying, what can we do for right now? So if staff can make sure that we're doing quality, um, when we're patching, not just saying, okay, I'm going to patch this hole and then not patch that hole. Because at the end of the day, you're going to come back, you're going to run into that pothole. Um, and I had that, and most recently, and I'm going to have that discussion with you on Old Conyers Road. Um, and also on Flippin'. So these, in East Atlanta as well. But these are things that I'm concerned about. Um, questions, um, I just want to put faith back into a system that we're putting out there and we're telling our constituents to go to see, click, fix. And if they're not having faith in that system, then we as district commissioners are failing at what we're doing. So when we're saying if we can have the money, then maybe we can wait to Splot 6, right, David? If that is there. But at the same time, that is something that we're saying that may not be there, right? So what can we do now for best practices to plan with the staff that we have to make things happen in a quality way for our constituents?
So my response to that question is, uh, we're about to begin our fiscal year '25 budget planning. And for us to include whatever is necessary, whatever Mr. Romero's going to need for his department to make certain that there's appropriate dollar amount set aside to address his needs, not only from staffing, uh, which you mentioned, but from the materials, uh, that are going to be needed, uh, to repair the roads themselves. And I, I think that that would be my best recommendation for that.
And thank you. And I also want to go a step further to let everyone here know. I have wrote, uh, written the roads as well myself, taken pictures and videos because I know staff, uh, even not just on the county side, but the city side as well. So I also send my videos to the city manager to let him know, hey, I'm on the city side now. People should not have to determine where they are. So my communication, the way I operate, I'm going to speak with our cities and our county when it comes to roads because I am that person that is going from one end to the other. Um, so again, I just want to make sure that we're making it on our end, making it work so other people are not saying, oh, that's the county side. When in District 2, they won't be able to say that. And when we're talking about our Splot dollars, I just want my constituents to know that public safety and our road infrastructure or in our seniors' Parks and Rec are at the top of my list when it's coming to their concerns. But right now, I just want to make sure that our see, click, fix system is going to be something that we can have faith in.
Yes, ma'am.
And Rocky, uh, while we're talking about roads, um, there, you have a list of all roads that are prioritized far as ratings, correct?
That's correct, sure.
Okay. Um, Commissioner, um, Lewis, did you want to present something?
Absolutely. Um, so, let me, let me say this. Everything that you all just detailed about the things that you're doing, I think you're all doing a fantastic job. Don't, don't get lost in what I'm saying. I think you're doing a fantastic job. You are not only writing or correcting things that should have been done years ago, but you're actually putting us ahead. I fully support that. I've supported every single missive that Parks and Rec has had, that DOT, Splot has had, even the Finance Department. I ask a lot of questions because we need information. I don't, I don't like to make decisions without having information. You did provide information for this, but even with that information, you know, I, just like Commissioner Anglin, I, I do this type of stuff for a living too. And I know that we can do immediate things and also still prepare for the future at the same time. So I support everything that you're doing. But with that, um, I still think that there is some room for the district commissioners and the chair, if she wants to be so inclined, to have some funding that is discretionary so that they can have district improvements. That, that's, that's what I believe. That's what I believe. It's no slight to anybody. I think you're all doing a fantastic job. I think the county manager has done a fantastic job since she's become the county manager in making sure that we're addressing all these needs going forward and making sure that we are improving the county. We, we are doing a great job. Henry County is leaps and bounds, uh, ahead of many of the counties of our same size and in this metro Atlanta region. I fully agree with that. But with that being said, I still think that there is some room for some latitude with the commissioners to make sure that they handle the constituents' needs. So with that, that being said, I, I move that we approve the resolution for, for the mid-year with, um, the addition that, and I've realized that this is not money that we have yet. The chair tried to make that clear, but I know there's money we don't have yet. But that 50% of that money that is set aside for balance be a portion to the district commissioners to be split equally. That is my motion.
Chair?
Question. You said district commissioners.
I said, I said district commissioners and the chair.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Sharon?
So, and also I just want people to understand, uh, we were elected to represent our districts. And it's kind of hard when we're having to wait, um, on certain things. But if we had access, um, to certain, um, had access to certain things that we know that we can go ahead and take care of it, and I call it low-hanging fruit. Um, because sometimes it's like we're having to wait and wait and wait, um, on certain things. And, and I think that is where the fail is coming from the, you know, the faith of our constituents. And so I think that's where we are. But like you said, David, that's something that, the plan, um, that can be worked out and then we can go from there. But we have to serve our constituents, um, as county commissioners.
So, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, lots of conversation this morning. Certainly did not see the mid-year morphing into, um, the quality of work that our staff does. And so, I know you didn't say that, Commissioner Lewis, but that was, that's the gist of what we're saying. We're saying that we're not getting projects completed. And you may not have said that, Commissioner Lewis, but the comment was made. And so I want to make sure that I clarify that we are trying to get things done. Um, I'm not going to point a finger at a previous board or who didn't do what. But what I can say is that everything that we've done moving forward has been based on a plan. Um, there was a question raised in terms of how we rate our roads. We created that. We have a road rating system, but we need our board to follow the road rating system. And I'll be, I'm just going to be abundantly clear with you all. We talk about a lot of the roads that you all have issues with are roads that are rated fairly low. But when we start splitting funds based on districts and not based on needs, we're going to continue to have the problems that we have with our roads. It's, it's not a slack at any commissioner, but there is just not enough money to go around for what all the needs are. I think Commissioner Wilson put it best in terms of $3 billion worth of infrastructure needs that we have. We have worked diligently. A lot of the projects that Jonathan has mentioned, a lot of the projects that Rocky has mentioned, a lot of those projects were not a part of the approved budget. But when the commissioner called, we tried to make it happen. And so what that means is that another project is going to have to go to the back of the lines so that we can get other projects moving. We inherited a lot of problems. We inherited, um, projects without a plan. We inherited parks and roads that there was no plan. It was just based on whoever was sitting in that particular seat, what their needs were or what their wants were. And I assure you, for the last seven years, we've stood before this board and said, we've got to have a plan, we've got to follow the plan, and we need to know what the priorities are. We talked about in the retreat what our priorities were. Uh, we talked about in the retreat going forward. And I think what staff has presented to you all is strictly based on what our needs are. If you look at the document that Ms. Campbell presented, staff request was about $4.2 million. We sliced it. We said, no, we're going to look at what do we need to get us through the end of this fiscal year, but also keeping in mind those one-time expenditures. You've heard our staff talk about LMEC funding, general fund dollars, impact fees. We're moving funds around. But keep in mind, we have a lot of projects that have come in over budget. Even with us putting discretion or contingency funding in place, the price to do business is very different now. Our county has grown. Roads are tearing up because we are adding people to our county and that, that it's just growing. And so what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we prioritize? I've said to each commissioner that I've spoken to about roads, we've got to stop looking at districts. We've got to identify our roads based on priorities. And I know you don't like it. I know you don't like it because your constituents are coming to you complaining, but a lot of the roads that we're getting complaints on are not the worst roads in the county. We can go out, we can fill a pothole, but you're right. It's going to be torn up in another eight, nine months, depending on how, what the weather is like, how much traffic is traveling those roads. So we're trying to work towards that. I caution against us taking, Commissioner Lewis, the 50% of those funds. Unless this board has taken a position, we don't want to move forward with the capital projects that we've committed to. We have to do those projects, the Judicial Center, um, the facilities that we need for the jail, what the sheriff has asked for. You all have asked us to find a way to fund those projects. The only way to fund it is through setting aside those capital... The only way to fund it is through setting aside those capital funds. One of the main purposes behind our Public Facility Authority was for them to have the ability to go out and do financing for the county for these projects, but you still gotta pay. And so what we're trying to do is be proactive to make sure that going forward, we don't build a building and not be able to afford it or be able to pay for it. So I, I, Commissioner Lewis and I agree on a lot, um, but I have to disagree with splitting the funding fifty percent. Um, I would certainly like to look at other options, if other options are available, but I'm just very concerned with us splitting the fifty percent. If the desire is to set aside funding, then I think we need to look on the overhead and figure out which projects are gonna go away. And that's gonna be hard for me to say to our public safety team, well, we can't do overtime. I don't remember who mentioned it, but a lot of that overtime cost are events that commissioners may have, that we have to have staff, um, activities. Keep in mind, this year, we opened up warming stations, something that we haven't done in the past. Those warming stations have to be manned. Less than two weeks ago, we had a warming station open for a whole week, meaning that I had to have public safety there at that warming station from seven PM to seven AM. Other events that are going on throughout the county in which we have to have public safety. So that is that overtime cost. Um, contracts and services increases, I've talked about that. Bernita's talked about that. One of the things I've heard from at least each, maybe not all, but most all of the commissioners is the funding for the library. That's something that we've put off, put off, put off, but it is included. Um, the additional elections and voter registration personnel, we have to have that. We have an election coming up. The mental health expenses for the jail. Um, the summer concert series, if that's something the board wants to pull, obviously, that would be one of those items that may not be a must-have. But I've heard at least for the last thirty or forty minutes, what can we do to enhance the park experience? And so we've included that. Gas costs, I have no control over that. It's an increase. And then those other operational costs. So there is no, I don't wanna say fluff, but there is no fluff in this, this mid-year budget. The only set aside is the seven-point-five, and I'll be honest with you, I asked David to set aside ten million because I don't think seven-point-five is gonna take care of what our needs are. So I'll yield to any of the commissioners.
Let me say this here. If it was to be split the six ways, ha- uh, half of the seven-point-five, set aside for commissioners, each, each, uh, each, it'd be six-twenty-five, what road can we pay for six-twenty-five?
It's, it's, it's basically an L-Meg.
What, what road?
Hold on.
Now, wait a minute, hold up. I'm, I, I want, uh, Rocky to come up. What can we do for six-twenty-five?
Chair, we might be able to maybe do a mile.
Maybe a mile?
Maybe a mile. If, if we do FDR, like, for example, I know Kiss Ferry has been on, on the rack, you know? A lot of calls on Kiss Ferry, that, that might do a portion of it. Uh, you mentioned, uh, Commissioner, uh, Allcorners and Flip. And we might be able to do one of those maybe, but, yeah, it's not, it's not gonna go a long way.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Um, Dee.
Dee, for a living. So what I'm hear, up here, and I know historically each district, before I ever got on the board, had some allotment of money. And I don't know if it needs to be handled through this per se, okay? But I do hear everybody saying, hey, I wish each district had a pot of money. And I'm not saying, let's alter this plan right here. My thing is, thinking moving forward as we're working together is, how do we come up with a small pot of money that each district may can pull from? And then that's where we start pointing that district commissioner to go for, if that's fitting for that district.
It had always been done through Splot, is my understanding. I think the last Splot, each commission district got twenty-two million. And so, you know, they spent that, how? Is that correct, Rock, Rocky? Didn't each district in the last Splot? It was nineteen million, okay.
But that did not include the chair. That was just the districts.
Right, right. So, um, you know, moving forward in this Splot, one of the things that we had talked about was setting ten millions aside for each, um, um, for each commissioner, uh, to be able to utilize for their districts how they, um, saw the need. And I know that that has been conversation in this current Splot. So, um, Commissioner Anglin, to answer your question, that's how it had been done before.
And like I said, all I'm saying is, this is what I hear folks saying up here, is they have a desire to have a pot of money that they can pull from for their district needs. And whatever that might be, I, I don't know. It can cover numerous things. David, I'm not, that, that, leave that up to you and your staff, but that's what I hear being up here, so.
Wait a minute, Commissioner, uh, Lewis.
So with that, you're saying, oh, it's only six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars and I can only do one mile of road? So we're probably set very soon to get an additional L-Meg from the state, which will be another six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So that would equate to about one-point-two million dollars for each commissioner for their district. And what I keep hearing, what, what you're saying is, I understand, I'm not disparaging staff whatsoever. Never have, never will. I think you all did a great job. But I, I will be steadfast in what I'm saying in that we have needs. And all I'm hearing right now is, just wait, just wait, just wait, just wait, just wait. We have constituents. We have people to call us every day. They don't wanna hear, just wait, 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 wait. They pay property, they don't, they don't wait to pay their property taxes. There's nobody in here that waits to pay their taxes. But you just want us to wait, 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 wait. That's what I hear. So, we got a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Oh, she's gotta come in. Go ahead.
Again, David, uh, working the plan, um, when we're talking about the numbers, and I hear you, county clerk, um, I mean county manager, my apologies. But you have to understand, when you're saying the numbers, that number could have been six months ago. Um, changes have been made. Now potholes are bigger, right? How often do you go back and re-evaluate those numbers? Because to me, that's where the problem is. Um, and I guess as the, um, commissioner, writing these roads, seeing it, I want it done then. You heard my video. I like to tore my car up, right? Um, so that could've been numbered six months ago, right? Or longer than that. Um, so I just wanna know, um, if we had the funding, we can go ahead and call you and just say, hey, this is happening. I need this fixed, right? Um, but you did that. Um, however, again, I wanna go back to Rocky, when you're talking about, you know, your department. What do you need? Cause if we're in this position, uh, from something that happened years ago, how can we fix it to make sure that Rocky has exactly what he needs, the manpower, to go out and take care of that? Um, is that something we need to increase his budget, right, um, to make it happen? Because apparently, we're all talking the same thing. And at the end of the day, it's a problem. So how can we fix this problem? I'm not taking away from any of that here, because these are major. Not taking away from anybody's employees or any of that. Um, and definitely not, um, trying to make it seem like you guys are not doing your job. I'm only speaking of what is happening right now. So what can we do to fix it? What plan of action can we do right now?
So a plan of action, which is what I recommended, is to set aside seven-and-a-half million for our capital plan and bond payments. Why do I recommend that? When it comes time to do a bond, and analysts take a look at how you're going to fund the next payment, cause you have to make certain you have enough sitting in the bank to fund your upcoming principal and interest payment, we are not going to have enough set aside to do that. That's going to be an issue. So it puts that bond issuance, it puts the payment terms, it puts all of that in jeopardy. Once you put that in jeopardy, that puts your court, your justice system, your Justice Center, your sheriff's jail, pod, the additional annex that you wanted to bill for that, it puts all of that in jeopardy. And so, I'm saying, the time to take a look at the budget is over the next. I think we're starting at the end of this month, uh, where we will be having our fiscal year twenty-five budget meetings, is to take a look at that. Our budget is based upon our revenues. We don't base our budget based upon what the requests that come in. Our revenues, the revenue source, two primary revenue sources, property taxes and our local option sales tax. This year, we just lost two-and-a-half million dollars in local option sales taxes due to the de-addexation, uh, from the county into the city of Stockbridge. So that money's starting to decline. Property taxes are starting to decline as people decide to not move from their homes because of the interest rate that they have. With the frozen exemption, that revenue stream is going to begin to stabilize and we won't be able to do anything. So as we plan to go forward, to do a lot of these projects, and remember, it's planning that allowed us to do, it was two or three years ago, where we started our first capital improvement plan, where we were able to fund it because we were setting aside money to fund the plan. We were able to set aside twenty million dollars to begin some of those capital improvements that had been deferred. So my recommendation is to set aside the seven-and-a-half million, not to split that amount, and then to work with our Splot program, to work with our L-Meg program, to work with our T-Splot program, and then to evaluate at the budget time for fiscal year twenty-five the needs of the Department of Transportation to address the needs that each of the commissioners are talking about right now.
So, I was gonna ask Commissioner Lewis, are you requesting to take this seven-point-five million and split it?
That's, that's, that's the motion.
You said half of it.
Mm-hmm.
She said split it. Yeah, fifty percent of the seven-point-five. Realizing that this is not, this is projected revenue, so that's why I say fifty percent. I did not put a dollar amount on it. I put a percentage amount on it. Because it's not realized revenue as of yet.
Right. So this right here is projected, what we're wanting to do with the money. Is that what you're saying, David?
It's a projection of what we expect to receive by the end of fiscal year twenty-four. So that number could decrease based upon the expenses.
Okay. And you didn't wanna use a different source, funding source?
What's the other funding source?
Were you trying to use a different funding source or this funding source?
What's the other funding source? There isn't, there is no other funding source. This is, this is the funding source.
Okay, so his motion is to split fifty percent of the seven-point-five million between, so that would make it, what, three-point?
Three-point-seven-five.
Three-point-seven-five and, uh, among six commissioners. That's correct? Is that, is that correct? Okay, that's his motion, and then Johnny seconded that motion. Okay.
Shoulders on my road, so whatever I can do with five-hundred, but basically what we should do, uh, is have a, get a prize county-wide to fix shoulder striping and RPMs. But that'd be pretty expensive, wouldn't it, Rocky? Be more than three-point-five million, correct?
Correct.
But we have these, this is something that L-Meg, Splot, none of the, it don't take care of that maintenance. It don't take care of striping L, uh, with the RPMs and the shoulders. That falls back on, the shoulder work falls back on the DOT guys, but they, they busy and they got a lot to maintain.
So is the striking and all of this something that you, we can put in the upcoming Splot Six? If that's something that we want to do? I mean, because we can't spend any of the money till it's collected. So by the time we, Splot Six is voted for and, and we start the collections, it's still gonna probably end up about the same time because you might have projects that, that are available to do right now, but you don't, you're not gonna get the money today. So you're not gonna get the money until we collect it.
Would you leave by June thirtieth?
Yeah, but these, these roads need to be done now. We can't wait.
Is this fiscal year, correct?
Hmm, yes.
Madam Chair, may, may I also clarify something? So we collect twelve months' worth of revenue in three months. That means that we have to survive nine months out of the year until we can collect that money again. At June thirtieth, there's no, this is the projection of where we are expecting to be. We may not be there. And at June thirtieth, when we present those financials to an analyst and they say, how are you going to fund this? Because you have no money set aside for it and your collections don't look as if over the next five years, cause they do projections. There, it doesn't look like you're gonna be able to afford this. So my, my statement is, we are putting, we would put ourselves in jeopardy at this time if we set aside half of this for roads instead of waiting for the fiscal year twenty-five budget planning process, we're able to project, project out what our fiscal year twenty-five revenues are going to be to see if it's something we can afford.
Okay.
So if we didn't have this projected excess revenue, what would you have done?
We would, we'd be coming to you with a mid-year, uh, budget that just basically transferred over the two items where we closed out Cotton Fields Operations, where we transferred money over to community development. And that would be the mid-end, any of the donations or
Grants.
Grants that we received throughout the year that we need to make adjustments for.
And what would you set aside to put in the fund balance if we didn't have this projected over?
There would be nothing to be set aside to put in the fund balance.
Okay, so you got a motion on the second. And, um, the, um, our financial director has advised us that this is a bad idea, but you got a first and a second, all in favor. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is the ordinance amendment purchasing policy. Susan?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. At the January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four workshop, a presentation was made to the Board of Commissioners stemming from the disparity study, the local sheltered market program and ordinance changes. This presentation led to questions being presented by the Board of Commissioners. Today, we would like to address those questions. Do we have pre-bid workshops? We do not currently host pre-bid workshops. We host pre-bid meetings for certain types of proposals and bids, providing opportunities for contractors, subcontractors, and interested parties to attend and meet each other. Do we hold pre-bid, pre-bid meetings? Certain types of bids and proposals facilitate the need for pre-bid and pre-proposal meetings. These meetings are typically on-site visits. These meetings are held in order to clarify specifications and expectations to answer supplier questions specifically to a certain bid or proposal, or to allow suppliers to conduct onsite review and inspection. Some pre-bid and pre-proposals are mandatory, others are not mandatory. The bid document will state whether or not a pre-bid meeting is mandatory or not mandatory. Failure to attend and sign in for a mandatory conference will result in disqualification for that particular project. What is the reason for not holding pre-bid workshops? We hold pre-bid meetings, the site visit. This is open to prime contractors and subcontractors. We will consider hosting workshops in addition to our vendor fairs. Do we provide opportunity for, to meet prime contractors? Opportunities are currently provided at pre-bid meetings, site visits, where a subcontractor would have the ability to meet with prime contractors. Notification of site visits are posted on the bid documents. Do we provide the ability to meet subcontractors? We currently provide that ability at the pre-bid meeting, the site visit. We will consider hosting workshops in addition to our vendor fairs. What is the Small Business Reserve? The Small Business Reserve will provide opportunity for small and veteran-owned businesses who are registered and certified in the Local Sheltered Market Program to offer quotes for goods and/or services that range between seventy-five-hundred for goods and/or services that range between seventy-five hundred and one hundred thousand dollars. Do we have a list of WMBE participants to choose from? Not currently. The local sheltered market program will generate a list of businesses which are registered and certified. This list of vendors will be posted to the purchasing website, and a link to the website will be included in the RFP, RFQ documents. How do we ensure we have an inclusive policy to provide small business opportunities? Our policy is inclusive and provides equitable opportunity. It can be enhanced. The local shelter marketplace program would increase opportunity to register certified businesses. With the RFP, RFQ process, we will post subcontracting goals or benchmarks, say Henry County wishes to have prime contractors meet. Can we expand Ms. Stevenson's services to implementation of the disparity study? We are in the process of obtaining a quote for software that would track prime and subcontractor usage and reporting. We could also benefit from additional resource to handle contract compliance. What mechanism will you use to ensure that they are meeting the goal? Again, we are in the process of obtaining a quote for software that would track. What makes up that thirty-four percent? For an example, under construction, you'll see that twenty-eight point eight one percent was African, one point three nine percent was Asian, three point seven two percent was Hispanic, and zero point forty was native. That is where the thirty-four point one percent came from. Why raise the fifty thousand dollar limit? This actually increases opportunities for smaller businesses. Approximately four percent of overall spend is below one hundred thousand. It accretes efficiencies in purchasing, turnaround time, and overall market conditions. Can we see primes have the mix of employees and their companies? We see the mix in the RFP, RFQ responses along with subcontractor gifts. We are seeing, being called joint venture partners, so we can see their team members that they are proposing to work on our projects. When do we evaluate contract renewals? Annual contracts are evaluated several months into a new contract. At the end of the first year of the contract, we reach out to the county user departments to determine if the relationship with the vendor is good, that required services are being before, performed, and contract goods are being received. If the department is satisfied with the vendor's performance, we reach out to the vendor and ask for an additional one-year renewal. Do we have ongoing evaluation of vendors? See the above regarding that response. What is the limit on automatic renewals? Renewals are not automatic. The contract is awarded as an annual contract with two mutually agreed upon renewals not to exceed three years. What is the percentage that the county manager can approve on annual contracts? Right now, that's currently at ten, and I would like to go ahead and take a moment to clarify this ask. We have an annual contract vendor in place for t-shirts, uniforms. The vendor serves that first year. At the end of that first year, we reach out to that vendor and offer an extension of that contract. That vendor comes back and says, my supplier has increased his cost for me to be able to obtain this good. They would present a cost increase to us. Currently, as long as it does not exceed that ten percent, that can be approved through county manager. If it exceeds that ten percent, then we would bring that to the Board of Commissioners for approval. That vendor would also give us the documentation showing that his supplier has increased the cost to them. What is the dollar amount for professional services exemption? That's not to exceed a hundred thousand. Anything greater would require approval by the Board of Commissioners. What is the emergency purchase definition? Per the state of Georgia and our ordinance, emergency purchase means purchases mandated by unforeseen and unaffordable circumstances in which human life, health, or property is in immediate jeopardy, and the expenditure is necessary to preserve life, health, or property. What is the local vendor privilege? The local vendor privilege was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March second, two thousand nine. This allows local vendors within five percent out of an outer county vendor to match that price quoted. How can we be more inclusive? We currently have the supplier inclusion policy where we remove obstacles of participation for small, local, veteran-owned, DBE, and female-owned businesses. This was adopted in September of two thousand seventeen. This will be enhanced by the implementation of our internal annual aspirational goals, implementation of contractor benchmarks, and the local shelter market program. How can we put more teeth in, to require a goal by requiring? Can we mandate requirements? What percentage of our contract with primes are required to have a percentage of MWBE participation? Why are the percentages not a requirement but a goal? This morning, I have with us CEO and co-founder, Mr. Griffin Strong. Griffin is strong, Mr. Rodney Strong.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the Commission. I'm Rodney Strong. I'm the CEO of Griffin and Strong. We conducted the most recent disparity study for the county, and I have with me Michelle Clark Jenkins, who is the Director of our Consulting Division, and she oversaw this particular study. I have her in case there are some specific, you know, detailed questions about any of our methodology. But we conducted a study, and the bottom line on the study is that we found that there was a basis for a program for Henry County to address any issues related to ensuring that there's equal opportunity for minority and women-owned businesses in the county. And if we can go back to the slide where we had the questions, I can try to answer each one of those questions. Yeah. Before we, I think there were some specific questions in there. All right, sorry about that. So a couple of, several of the questions are, how can we put more teeth into the goal by requiring? It's not a full question, but I think what you're asking is, how can we, you know, what, what kind of requirements can we put in place? And what we're made, what we made was a set of recommendations that we believe can have an impact on improving the level of participation in those areas where we found that there were disparities. And I think all of these questions kind of come from one place, and if you'll allow me, I just want to make one, you know, very, you know, quick statement. I don't want to get too deep into the law, but many of you are probably familiar with programs such as programs that have been in place for a very long time with the City of Atlanta and other governmental entities where there are programs in place and participation levels are set at certain levels. In the late nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty-nine, there was a Supreme Court decision, and it basically said that anytime a decision is being made about procurement, that if race or gender are being taken into consideration, it has to have two elements to it. One, you have to determine that there is a basis based on statistics and based on anecdotal evidence to do one of two things, either address current discrimination in the marketplace or to redress past discrimination in the marketplace. And so we did this study, which gives us a lot of statistical support for having a program. But then there's a second element to it that says that any steps that a government takes, and this is a term that the courts use, have to be very narrowly tailored to address those concerns. And so what you want to do is to say, how do we ameliorate the problems that we've identified without being overly burdensome on somebody who's trying to obtain a contract? Because the courts have said that bidders on contracts have a property interest in those contracts. And so the way we've tried to address it is by saying, let's look at what issues affect all small businesses in general, which is not race conscious, it's not gender conscious, and let's address those issues. And then let's look at how you can ensure non-discrimination through certain steps. And so we believe that you can mandate certain requirements for equal opportunity, but we don't believe that it's possible to mandate a particular outcome on individual contract. And so therefore, we set goals because you have to look at an individual procurement and say, why did you not obtain the participation on this particular project? What is the basis for this failure? And so there was a time, I used to run Atlanta's program at a time when you had to have twenty-five percent participation or your bid was thrown out automatically. That's just not viable from a legal standpoint, and so I think that addresses that, that second question. And, you know, the requirement is that based on our availability in the marketplace, we would expect a certain level of participation, and that's why we set a goal. And then your staff is going to be looking carefully at whether or not a company came in within those ranges. If it didn't, it's going to trigger an inquiry into why that didn't occur. And of course, if there's no legitimate reason for that, other than they had made a decision that they would prefer not to work with firms in the marketplace that are minority and women-owned firms, that's going to be a basis for you making a determination that you're not going to move forward on that particular contract. And then finally, addressing that last question, the requirements versus goal, the idea is that the courts have said very explicitly that there has to be flexibility, there has to be waiver provisions, and there has to be an individual particularized analysis of every procurement because bidders on projects have a property interest in those, in those contracts. And so that's why we made the recommendations we made. We think that they're a good place to be for where Henry County is right now. We're available. We are always going to be available to work with you to make adjustments as you all put in place your software, as you all make decisions about whether or not you're going to enhance your staffing in this area. We're going to be available to help with any training, to do anything that's necessary to ensure that you can reach the goals that we've set. But we also want to be very mindful of the fact that we want to keep you very clearly within the bounds of what the Supreme Court has said, or the legal constraints that any government must adhere to.
Thank you so much, Mr. Strong, for answering those questions for us. Is there any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolution to the Board of Commissioners authorizing local
The local sheltered market program is the registered certified for small business and veteran-owned businesses. Businesses that register for this program cannot exceed ten million annually. They will be given opportunity to provide quotes for goods and services that are between seventy-five hundred and one hundred thousand dollars. And that's been covered in both of the presentations that we have presented to the board. Are any questions regarding that?
Any questions regarding this?
A little bit confused.
Is, is, can, is this a different, this is a different resolution, correct?
It is correct.
Okay, all right.
One is the purchasing ordinance, and the other is the local sheltered market program, which would enhance opportunities for small and veteran-owned businesses.
No, so what this?
Go back to what page that's on.
Okay.
Really got me.
Okay, so one was a policy amendment to the purchasing policy?
Correct.
That Mr. Strong just presented. The other is the local shelter market giving which businesses?
This would be small and veteran-owned businesses that would be eligible to register under this program if they need to be certified and they need to make less than ten million annually. These vendors would generate the list of WMBE participants that we will post on our website and also will post the links in our RFP and RFQ documents. These vendors would also be given first opportunity at any good or service that we were to put out for bid between seventy-five hundred and one hundred thousand dollars.
So these are small that address the minority women, veteran, these are small businesses that will not, businesses that may not compete in the bid process?
And because these are under a hundred thousand dollars, there's no bond requirements for these businesses, which has been a restriction to them in, in the past.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Get a second. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Next item is planning and zoning, RZ twenty-three, oh, no. What are we doing?
We got some of the.
Okay, so do we not want to get the planning and zoning out of the way? Because there's someone here for that? Is the applicant here for the planning and zoning?
The monetary.
Okay, all right, so I want to get them out of here. You all gonna be here all day, so let's get, let's get them out of here. Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is property located at eighteen hundred McGary Road and is currently zoned RA residential agricultural with a future land use map designation of low-density suburban supporting up to two dwelling units per acre net. This request was actually approved by the Board of Commissioners in July of two thousand twenty-three, but due to an error in the application, staff is bringing it back for the board to perfect the record. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. The request is to split the subject property into two lots. Both lots would be under the acre requirement of the RA and R1 zoning districts, thus the basis for the R2 septic as requested. Here are the elevations submitted by the applicant, and on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the applicant's request with conditions. These are the same conditions discussed at that July two thousand twenty-three BOC meeting. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do, is, this is a public hearing, correct, Stephanie? So is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Please come forward, and you have a collective total of ten minutes, and that's including the applicant. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, is there any questions from the board? If not, Commissioner Anglin, this is your district.
No questions. Make the motion that we approve based off the zoning advisory board's recommendation.
Okay, got a motion? Is there a second? Motion's second. No further discussion, all in favor. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Susan, where's Susan? Did she leave?
Yes, she just left.
Okay, so I need Susan to come back. There's some additional questions that we need to get cleared up, but while we're waiting on that, we had two items that were removed from the regular agenda from the Finance Department, so if you could. So if you could please come forward and discuss Financial Services, is that correct? The American Rescue Plan. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Monique Franklin, grants administrator for Department of Financial Services. We're here to, a resolution that we're presenting to you today for the America Rescue Act Plan in the amount of 4.57 million dollars for economic development and future activities that would generate jobs and businesses in the community. As you remember, on January 16th, we had a BOC workshop and when we gave our final recommendations in order in how to allocate these final 8.5 million dollars. And this is one of the resolutions in which we recommend it. So today, we just wanted to bring it back before the board to vote on that we actually allocated into the correct category of economic development.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Because this was the airport property.
Yes.
This is-
This is the airport property funding.
Okay, but, okay, but the next one, though, what is that?
Okay, we're doing one at a time. This is the airport.
So I'm good with this one.
Okay, so can I, yes.
I have a question. I just want her to put on for the record-
Yes, ma'am.
-who has access to this pool of money? The 4.57 million. Who are you saying have access to it? You say this for economic development. The way it's written here is for economic development and future activities that would generate jobs and businesses in the community. I hear you saying it's for the airport. My goal is to say, who is this money, has access to this money?
Nobody. This money was already, this money is, was used for airport property.
So this is for-
Purchase.
Got it, I understand that. I'm just simply saying the documentation on this paper, make it appear this is for business in the community and I would have preferred for, as you stated, be specific as to what this is for, so we'll know exactly what we're talking about. It's written general here, she says specific for the airport property. I'm fine with it being the airport property and this needs to state it in order that you state that when you did your presentation. That's what I was wanting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so any other questions?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
No.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Can you do the next item?
Yes. This resolution you have before you today is a request to allocate ARPA funding in the amount of 4.23 million, 453,000 for community development activities. This funding will be allocated and designated to the Department of Community Development and is for specific activities assisted to communities, grants to local nonprofits, individual households, to include but not limited to rent, mortgage, utility assistance, food banks, existing shelter operations, other homeless services, services for veterans, families, youth, and et cetera.
Shannon, can you come forward and speak on it so we can-
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, these ARPA funds will be utilized as we provide assistance to the community as a whole. Individual households will be required to meet our income limits. There'll be an application process. Currently, we're in the process of providing for and developing the NOFA and applications. We will do these very specifically. There'll be a NOFA for the specific areas for which we are seeking to provide funding.
Are there any questions from the board?
I'm good.
Okay. You got questions?
I just wanted to, again, for the record, this is the funding that we've also reserved money for, Public Safety's E911, First Responders, right?
No.
So, no, ma'am.
This is not 500,000 coming out of this fund, is it coming out of another fund?
So not out of these funds. As I recall from a previous meeting, we did discuss where employees such as those in public safety could apply, but we did not look to have a reserve pot limited to those applications, but said they could be given priority.
No, my request was specifically for a certain amount to be set aside specifically for our public safety, emergency response, individuals to have access to those funds.
And we cannot do that based on the federal guidelines of the grant funding. You cannot exclude or be exclusive to any particular group with this funding. These are ARPA funds and they are very, the guidelines are very restrictive. We discussed this in the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. So we do hear the request, however, I caution the board to be that specific. We do want to make certain that those individuals are aware of the funds and that they have access to apply as anyone else would, and that is the intent.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve? Got a motion, can I get a second? Got a second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for November 7th?
Yeah, one more.
Oh, I got one more?
Legal.
Oh, legal, okay, all right, I'm sorry. County Attorney, Mr. or Ms. Serena Noel to come up and talk to us on the legal-
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. This item is a resolution to approve an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between Henry County and the Henry County Development Authority. The intergovernmental, excuse me, the intergovernmental agreement covers a ground lease between the county and the development authority. There was, and the project that is involved is the Mighty Hero Homes project for veterans' housing. There was a need to clarify some language in the agreement so that it was clear that none of the land could be sold by Mighty Hero Homes. So we added language that says, that prohibits sale of the land either by Mighty Hero Homes or any successor to Mighty Hero Homes in case, you know, they change their organizational structure. So that is the extent of the amendment.
Any questions? Yes.
So the land will maintain, you have the county, is what you're saying?
The county maintains ownership, yes, ma'am.
Ownership, and they can just lease the land from the county? Got it.
Correct.
That was one of my concerns. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You got a question?
No.
Okay, got a motion to approve? Can I get a second? Motion is second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, can I clarify? Fisher Thomas voting?
No, no, she voted no. Okay, any public comment? Stephanie?
Any.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for November 7th, 28th, 28th call meeting, December 5th, 14th, and January 3rd? Can I get a motion to approve all those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion is second. All in favor? Motion carries. We need to move into executive session, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next upcoming board meetings and events, February 20th at 6:30, be a regular scheduled BOC meeting, March 5th, 9:00 a.m. regular BOC meeting.
Oh.
Oh, we got, we did, did we not do swap?
No, that wasn't considered, did it?
That was on the consent agenda, yeah, uh huh. So then I just need to call for a motion for us to go into executive session. Attorney Noel, is it any?
One item is for litigation.
Okay, all right.
And public safety.
Okay, so we are moving into executive session for litigation and public safety. Got a motion, can I get a second?
No.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, we're going to move to executive session and then we will reconvene. Okay, we're going to move to executive s- session, and then we will reconvene.
...
Call for a motion for us to reconvene from executive session.
Motion, second.
Motion second, all in favor? I'd like to call for a motion to approve an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.